You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 13th meeting for the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
All right, welcome everybody to Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, meeting for the Michigan City Commission for the Social Status of African American Males. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And first thing on today's agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the pledge. Mr. Hurt, please lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance, tip of the flag of the United States of America and tip of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next, we have roll call. Nick Pollak, present. Vice Chair Robert Johnson, I have not heard.
He's in Indy.
Okay. Treasurer Fay Moore, she is also out for a doctor's appointment, excused. Recording Secretary Quayla Cooper, who may be online, still waiting to hear. And then Commissioner Hurt.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Present.
Commissioner Cox, did not hear from him. Commissioner Millsap.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Smallwood, I did not hear from him. And Commissioner Benning.
Present.
And I'm present too, this is Quayla.
Okay, that's what we needed, thank you.
Wow.
All right, now, next on the agenda is approval of the previous meeting minutes. I sent out June and July's minutes, did everybody get a chance to take a look at those? If not, I have a copy here if you need to see it. Otherwise, if everybody's had a chance to look at them, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Jim, I'll just say June, because I wasn't here. Motion to approve June minutes.
Second.
So I have a motion as second to approve June of 2025's meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Entertain a motion to approve July's.
Motion to approve July minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and probably second to approve July 2025 meeting minutes. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Next is the treasurer's report. Ms. Moore did leave me the statement from City Hall that's just showing our grand total of $4,429.06. I know there are two allocations waiting to be distributed, one for the midnight hoops still, because I had to wait on the minutes, and then a reimbursement, I believe, for Commissioner Armstrong for the back to school rally. So they have all the information, I'm just waiting for them to get the check cut.
Can you recite that total for me one time, Ms. Armstrong?
Yeah, I've got $4,429.06. And I could share this statement with you afterwards too, Quayla. All right, under old business, we had the back to school rally. You want to give an update on that?
Yeah, the back to school rally, I wasn't here last year, but I think it turned out really good this year. We were able to pass out over 800 notebooks, approximately, I would say, right around 300 pencils and some erasers. Total went out was about $153.25 worth of school supplies. We were there till the end, we did not run out, and so like I said, we had a great turnout.
Good deal. Thanks for going, I was out of town this weekend, so I wasn't able to make it, but I appreciate that.
I'd like to add.
Commissioner was?
Yeah, I'd like to add, it did go really well, and we were approached by the assistant principal from Barker, who would like to like work with the commissioners, with the, you know, the young African American males. And also, there was another parent who mentioned like us possibly working with the pro dad program at the schools, so that might be some things we could discuss.
I spoke with Corley, which is in charge of the program. That worked, the way that works is a parent of that school, a child of that school, would have to volunteer or be part of it, but a grandparent as well. So it's participating with someone that's already a student at those schools. He said he has someone at Edgewood, but he is looking for volunteers at the other schools.
Okay.
Is this, I'm sorry, are you?
Yeah.
Is this in line with the, under the Education Subcommittee of you, when you make the announcement of the schools needing volunteers to come out?
That will be something we can add to it.
Okay.
Because we were not aware that they were actually searching for others.
All right.
Oh, one more thing, so we also need like maybe updated pamphlets, or like some type of information to hand out to the parents. We did have a lady, well, actually a few people who were interested in more information about the program for their sons, and we were able to find like one old pamphlet, still had like Ron Mayer on it, and it was, maybe, yeah, just like some updated information for the, I don't know, for the program. Well, it was just like saying, under, under Mayer, Ron Mayer, or something.
Right, team to me.
Right. It was really good.
All right, I'll look into what we can do about getting some pamphlets to hand out, that's a good idea.
Other than that, it was, it was awesome. Like you said, we gave out a lot of journals and pencils, erasers. It was fun. Hopefully, more of us can be there next year, because it was hard to like step away, or, you know, kind of manage the table, but we did it, it was awesome.
What's the table?
I want to apologize, because I had initially volunteered to help spearhead that, like last year. I've been busy the last couple of months, I did attend June's meeting, July's meeting, I wasn't in town, and I had asked for to be contacted about it, and I didn't hear about it until the day of, the very day of about it. I didn't even know if we had gotten the, made the motion until I looked later at the notes, but I wasn't aware that we had even gotten that far, if we had purchased any supplies and what those supplies were to.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, because I was definitely, I'm always involved with that, so I was definitely participated with that.
Thankful also for the two that were there.
Yeah.
Danny, I was able to call him the day of also, and let him know that I was going to be out of town, and he picked it up, and so we're grateful that we did have two that were there.
Yes, because our booth last year was one of the most visited booths. We did have Commissioner Fly that had donated a lot of backpacks, and we had a lot of giveaways last year, so hopefully next year we can go back to, you know, having that, more of that presence out there, like you said.
Yep, all right, thank you. That's all I had under old business, anybody else have anything under old business you want to talk about?
I want to re-end it, bring up Core again, I wasn't able, the students there at the back to school rally were pretty young, so getting a survey of who would be interested, I've talked to several people about Core, so I do have a small list of several people that are interested, and you said you would mention the Community Activation Grant. Speaking to Fay, she had mentioned that there may be a possibility of us supplying some of that money towards the Core program. Whatever we do to get this on the go, I'd like to speak to someone, whoever educational, Mr. Hurt. Me myself, I'm 53 years of age, I'm still doing continuous education, that right there proves along that there's a necessary need of continuous education. I know myself particularly about three people that have Airbnbs, and they're always renting this space to workers from out of town, be it Texas, Las Vegas, engineers, electrician, labor foremen, these people are coming from, like I said, out of town to take our work. We need to educate these students so that they can work here and not tell ourselves.
Yeah, I agree, and sorry, I was going to bring that up under new business, because I don't think we've discussed this yet.
Right.
But, anything else under old business? Nothing? Okay.
There is someone that is online, but again, I don't know who it is, I'm going to allow them to talk, can you ask who they are?
Yep.
I'll be Fay.
Who just recently joined us online? Can you see her phone number, or just?
It just says Zoom user.
Okay.
They've also raised her hand, so they're trying to get our attention.
It's probably Fay. Yeah, she was supposed to Zoom it.
I did ask if it is Fay, and I did not give a response.
I'll text you right now and ask her.
Okay.
All right, if she has anything to add in old business, we'll go back, so moving forward, next on the agenda is, okay, she said it is her.
It is Fay.
I just told her we can't hear, maybe she didn't. Figure that out. So under new business, I did want to bring up this Community Activation Grant, so it's something that's being offered by the city, from the mayor, from the mayor's gala, where she raised funds. And it says here, as part of our ongoing efforts to deepen civic engagement and enhance our neighborhoods, I'm pleased to award $3,000 community activation grant to our boards and commissions. These funds made possible through the mayor's charitable gala are intended to support meaningful, locally focused initiatives that promote community involvement and visible neighborhood improvements. Eligible uses would include, each board or commission may choose to use the funds for one or more of the following purposes, provide scholarships to Michigan City residents for academic, vocational, or leadership development, organize a neighborhood cleanup engagement event that mobilizes volunteers and/or encourages civic pride, or execute a neighborhood beautification or public art project that improves public spaces or fosters community spirit. The requirements, all the projects must occur within Michigan City's limits. Each board must formally agree on how to utilize the funds during a public meeting and submit a basic proposal outlining the initiative to the mayor's office. Projects must be fully completed by March 15th, 2026. Final report, including photographs and a summary of impact, must be submitted by April 1st, 2026. So I know that we already have a scholarship fund set up through the Social Status Commission, if I'm not mistaken. I think this is something that maybe we could add to the scholarship fund, to give out maybe two scholarships instead of one, or, I don't know how many scholarships we've given out in the past, so I don't know how well that is received in the community. Maybe it's something that we could push even more if we had more funds for it. I don't know, does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Are you referring to the Ashley?
Yes.
Okay, we spoke about that in saying that, maybe get matching funds from.
Yeah, good question.
Ashley family, and so I'll talk to Pastor Ashley.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Cooper.
Question.
Go ahead.
So can you please go over the requirements for this? I see one was for residents and leadership, and then I heard you say, public parks and spaces, and what was the other?
The requirements for our, the eligible uses are for scholarships to Michigan City residents for academic, vocational, or leadership development, to organize a neighborhood cleanup engagement which mobilizes volunteers and/or encourages civic pride, or execute a neighborhood beautification or public art project that improves public spaces.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, Quayla. Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah.
So I received this, I don't think it was sent to everybody, but I'll forward you all the specifics of that form, so that you'll have it.
Thank you for mentioning.
You're welcome, I just sent it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
The maximum amount is 3,000?
Mm-hmm, 3,000.
Okay, so with that in mind, we should be able to do three projects, 1,000 apiece, one for BJ, the other for neighborhood, and the other one for whatever we else start, so that's, and that's not even touching what we already have.
Right.
So I'm all for it.
Yes, spread it around a little bit?
Yeah.
I'm all for that too.
Agreed.
Okay, we're going to have to come up with something solid and then have a vote on it as a board.
What's the window?
Was it March 15th?
Yeah, just March 15th, 2026, so.
And then it has to go before, be done.
By April 1st.
In a public meeting, and then we have to submit that proposal, the mayor's office also.
Yep, that's why we need to have something more concrete of how we're exactly going to distribute the funds. I think the scholarship, $1,000 for the scholarship is pretty self-explanatory, but do we have anything specific neighborhood wise, or, you know, we could think about that?
So we could have our plan in place by our next meeting?
Correct.
Wouldn't be too far off?
No, I think that'll work.
Okay. Because I have one idea for the neighborhood, for the cleanup, because I think a city councilman, has already jump-started a cleanup neighborhood program, Councilman Nelson, so.
Yep, okay, all right. Anybody else have anything to add on that? All right. Also, under new business, I drafted, I drafted a letter on behalf of the commission to the city council, requesting an annual donation. I know last year, we approached the city council during our annual report, and let them know that La Porte County had given us, given the commission a donation, and the city, as far as I knew, had never given the commission a donation, so at the time, Council President Tillman just said, you know, create a formal request and present it to the city council, so this is a draft, I want everybody to take a look at it, let me know what you think, and if you have any input or suggested changes, please let me know, and we can also vote on that by next meeting, and then get something sent to the city council.
Mr. Chair, it appears it covers all the bases, just for clarification wise, we're requesting the five, now that three has nothing to do with this five, right?
Correct, correct, yep, this would be a separate donation from the city.
I'm comfortable with it as presented, I'll make a motion that we accept the request for funds letter as submitted to the commission.
All right, I have a motion, I have a motion, probably second on the floor, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of presenting the letter as executed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, all right, I will make that happen.
We might want to think about if there's any other agencies that will do the same thing.
Yep.
Because we have that letter that came up with the donation letter, so we still have that also for any type of organization.
That we can send out?
Yeah, that we can send out.
Unity Foundation, Health Foundation, the banks.
Do you have a copy of that? I don't know if I have a copy of that.
Everybody received a copy, I can find it, I recommit it by email, it was in an email.
Okay, I'll look for it then.
It might be in one of our minutes too.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else under new business? No?
Okay, I don't know if this is new business or not, Abatina Allen of the Health Coalition contacted me about getting a breast cancer bar, and wanting to know if social status be able to get a table for $400 for eight, or individual, $50 for individual, and that's September the 20th, that was at September, that was from 6:00 to 10:00.
Can you repeat that, you sound real.
Okay, it's, okay, Ms. Abatina Allen of the Health Coalition, I want to know, could social status get a table for $400 for eight, or $50 for individual table, September the 20th, that was at September, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
So I'd like to make a comment regarding that, so last year, we participated, and we didn't buy a table, but we did have some commissioners that stated that they wanted to attend, and so we just did it individually, I think myself, some Commissioner Hurt, and a couple other people participated, so I think what we should do is see how many people would be interested, and then do it individually, if it's going to be more feasible, if it's more people and it's going to be more feasible to get a table, then we can look at that, but instead of just saying, we're going to pay $800 to purchase a table, and one person shows up, then that doesn't make any sense.
I agree. Was Commissioner Johnson, did he go last year for some reason?
No.
No, okay. You think we have four of those, and do we have any interest in anybody?
I mean, I care, I mean, we're seeing $50.
So we got two.
Mike, how much? $50, $50 a person.
Yeah. Anybody else interested?
I represent, if we need to go represent the mission.
Because it is like real men where he is there, so I think that would be awesome.
I think if you send out an email, because there's some people that may not be here that may want to.
Oh yeah, for sure, I'm not going to commit, yeah.
Get a headcount like that.
Yep, I was just curious, who's here today, that wouldn't be interesting going, so we got at least four, four or five, okay, all right, all right, good.
I want to go back and comment on the letter, I found the donation letter, I'll have to redo it, because it has prior officers on there from last year, myself, Commissioner Millsap as vice president, Fay as secretary, so I can redo that part of it, and then I'll send it back out.
Great, appreciate that. All right, anything else under new business? All right, moving on to subcommittee reports versus education.
The midnight basketball, we had talked about it up there, but I know you had other obligations when you were there, right? You had a table for someone else?
The UEA.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and then I was at the score table the whole time, so.
Well, I hadn't been able to get the check yet either, so I felt bad taking the table.
It was wonderful, day even, we had a dinner the other night, and the city is taking charge of all funds for next year.
Really?
Yeah.
Well.
Very good turnout. I can't even say really any issues that happened while we were there. Our only concern is maybe the people that are causing issues were not there, and that might never change.
You're right.
Never know, unless we kind of change the temperature around here somewhat.
Had a lot of people come out to hoop them?
Yes, a lot of people, very good games, participation from those watching was very good, and so everything turned out good for the entire month that we had, and then the final night, there was an All-Star game, there was competitions, three-point competition, dunk contest, and so it was a very good time. Good ages. The teams were 13 through 15, and then there were, there were four teams for that, and then 16 to, I believe, 26, so there were six teams for that age group.
About 100 basketball players.
Yeah, and there was not enough for specific female teams, but the females played on the teams, so.
Good, that's good.
Are we on the radar for next year also?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, and that's why I said the city has already picked up the tab for it.
Super, that takes up a fuss.
Yeah.
All right, next subcommittee report is health.
I contacted the Port County Health Department in La Porte, Indiana, about vaccination for school, and a nurse stated to me that it's mandatory by Indiana law for all kids to be vaccinated, from early school year, I mean, early child from kindergarten, then the next series would be sixth grade, and she said, nothing's changed, you know, only thing, if they don't get vaccinated, they would go and see why they're not vaccinated, but only way they can opt out of it is religious reasons and medical reason, but not that, they have to get vaccinated, and so, yes.
Okay. I know, my kids have gone through all that. Anything else under health?
They have to stay the first day of school.
Yeah, today's first day, yep.
Except for, not for my guy, he doesn't start full time until after Labor Day, if you guys are wondering, like, what is he doing? But, yeah, oh, I didn't see him. And we avoid a lot of those vaccinations, it's like, only the completely like necessary, but.
Yep.
The Health Department, they provide those vaccinations free, correct? Are they free?
I believe, weren't they at the backpack giveaway?
Back to school.
Back to school.
Health Department?
Yeah, it was on one of the flights.
Typically, they are, typically, yeah, they are.
They were there.
Yeah, so.
All right.
You said that the La Porte Health Department provides them for free, or is it for a fee? I didn't hear that.
I think she said it was for free, I think.
It should be.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, oh, excuse me, also I asked her about measles, and she says, from right now, La Porte County has no cases of measles, so starting the school year.
That's good, because you've heard about some outbreaks recently.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Next subcommittee would be employment.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have some good information to share with the commissioners this month. First one is openings for our county. The document states that Homet Aerospace have numerous openings such as shipping and receiving hourly production. shipping and receiving hourly production, production planner, welder. And the rate of pay is listed on the form. Second one is from, for the railroad, reference to railroad ties. They are having, uh, numerous openings for general labor. Starting salary, they listed as high. And all the requirements are listed on that document. And that would, that is with Mid, Midstates Railroad, generally forty-plus hours.
Where are they located?
It doesn't say, but there is a number that you can call on that document. It is area code two-one-nine-nine-eight-one-one-five-two-zero, extension one-three-seven-four. Once again, that's two-one-nine-nine-eight-one-one-five-two-zero, extension thirteen-seventy-four. Request to speak with the gentleman by the name of John Holliday. The next one is from Adams Landscaping Incorporated. They are looking for mechanics that deals with diesel and heavy equipment. And they are starting out at twenty-five dollars an hour. And the increased salary is if you have certification of knowledge of heavy equipment. That is with Adams Landscaping. The next one is with the company locally, Michigan City, On Point. And from looking at the salary, they are On Point. Uh, they are hiring and training people for confined space rescue attendance. No experience required. They will train you. You must be at least eighteen years of age. Must be able to pass a background check, no felonies, I repeat, no felonies. And a drug test is mandatory. They are located thirty-six seventeen East U S Highway twelve here in Michigan City. Phone number two-one-nine-two-one-four-one-two-seven-nine, On Point. The next one is through Health Link. We have Health Link here in our community. Uh, they are accepting applications for medical assistant training program. You get paid as you learn and dental assistance training program. Uh, they have a training center located in Balfouraiso. And you will learn as you will get paid as you learn full employment. And if everything works out, you will gain employment. That's what Health Link. The next one is a job fair, which is held in Hobart, August the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, hours of nine A M. to eleven A M. And twelve P M. to two P M. Positions available would be assembly, assembler, fabrication, brake press operator, lasers operator, machine operator, painters, order pickers, and material handlers. And the final one is with a company called Panduit. They are having a job hiring session, August the eighteenth in Miraville. Positions would be warehouse technicians. Starting pay is seventeen dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour and it goes all the way up to twenty-three, twenty-one an hour. Uh, eleven paid holidays, three weeks vacation and sick days, medical, dental, and 401 K. So you have all the documents. If anyone is, uh, in need of employment, you can share that information with them and also make whoever is looking for employment aware that Work One located at three-seventeen Detroit Street is the place to go for all of these positions. And I spoke with the intake clerk today and, uh, she made me aware that they have so many resources that they're confused why people are not tapping into their service. I E., if you are going through their process and you get into a, a position or program, they assist you with traveling, housing. So, uh, there are numerous resources available. Another example would be if they require steel-toed work boots, they would help you purchase them. So, uh, you won't know until you go there and find out what resources are available. Once again, Work One, three-seventeen Detroit Street, Michigan City. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Millsap. And just to add, um, I know Panduit just moved into a huge new facility uh, in Miraville and Difugu, also located in Miraville, or it might be Hobart right there. Um, just put a huge addition onto their, um, factory. So they're definitely growing, growing companies, so.
And in addition, uh, do not, let's not forget, I think last month I mentioned, uh, uh, Amazon.
Yep.
The warehouse. They are in desperate need. So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, employment is out there. It's just getting through the process to gain it. So, uh, Work One is in a position to assist you with that problem. So, you know, I, I just can't see why our community would have an employment issue if you want to work.
Yep.
So.
Yep. Um, just, uh, I have one thing to add. Uh, last night at City Hall, they had an open house for the Indiana Plan. Uh, so they had Mr. Turner, uh, come and speak. Uh, it was a really good turnout. Um, there was probably at least a dozen interested candidates that showed up to the meeting last night. Um, so they got to hear about what the Indiana Plan has to offer. The city is, um, or already has a Indiana Plan class scheduled for October. Um, the requirement was, um, you have to fill out an application at indianaplan.org. And then, um, there's gonna be a test to take prior to the orientation for Indiana Plan, which I believe the deadline, um, to get the application filled out and to get the, um, test taken, I think was September eleventh and twelfth, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so if anybody is interested in doing Indiana Plan, it's two-week program. Uh, you get introduced to the building trades during that two weeks. And then, uh, all the building trades have a direct entry program, um, to get into the trades once you complete that course. So. You're absolutely right, Commissioner Millsap. There's plenty of opportunity out there right now. Alright, anything else under employment?
Just thanks for all the awesome information.
Yes, great job. Next would be criminal justice. Anybody anything? Hmm, okay. And then, uh, last subcommittee report would be social factors. No, Fay's not here. If anybody has anything.
She's online.
She's online.
Yeah, she said she couldn't get it unmuted. Mm-hmm.
He said, uh, she is watching, um, on, um, Zoom, but she can't respond to anything because her, she said her mic's muted.
Mm-hmm.
It is muted on her side.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Do we have any public comment today?
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. As was mentioned before, today is back-to-school day for the Michigan City area schools and very soon for all the private schools. I think we're gonna have an awesome school year for all the schools. I did want to recognize that we fully expect, uh, Ms. Lenaya Davis from Michigan City Market School. We fully expect her to be named Indiana Miss Basketball later this, this spring. She's a really good, awesome player. I think it's only fitting, you know, it's very well documented here. We already have three Indiana Mr. Basketball. So the popularity of both, both men, girls, and women's basketball, we found, we're finally due to have a Miss, Indiana Miss Basketball. I want to commend and, uh, and in honor of our, our president, Nick Pollack, Jeff Lannister, your cemetery director. He recently gave his annual report at the city council meeting. Uh, Mr. Pollack and, and the carpenters union, they recently constructed a, a enclosure for the swans that they house at Swan Lake Memorial Gardens. And, you know, they can be humanely housed there. So I think that was a really cool thing they did. Another thing they said that was very inspirational, the, the Guardian Riders and, and the Wal Gang. Well, he took over cemetery, they found seventy bronze veterans markers inside one of the offices at, at, at the cemetery at Swan Lake. And, uh, they, they raised the money to put the, the grant foundations, they can put those, those markers on all those veterans' graves so they can be properly, uh, recognized. And also, uh, back in May, the Indiana Black Expo had their banquet and award ceremony. There were four of our community members that, that were honored with an award. First, our very own detective commissioner, Taylor Tillman, was presented with the I RISE Award. Councilman Brian Dabney was given the Community Spirit Award. First, no brainer, our mayor Angie, she was given the, the Lifetime Achievement Award. And two of our recent graduates, um, Brianna Barnes and Jamari Steele, they were, they were presented with the scholarship. So I think all that needs to be recognized. And that's all I have for today. And thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other public comment? Alright, moving on to commissioner comments. Uh, Commissioner Williams?
No comments.
No comment. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner?
Failed to, uh, recognize the annual prayer for back-to-school. Nicole Stewart is behind that. It was also been at the, uh, park, uh, on the west side. But, uh, weather didn't allow that to happen. So we moved it inside to New Hope. And, uh, very well attended. Uh, so we're just grateful that, uh, people do have a mind to pray about what, uh, the things that are happening here in this city and praying that the school year turns out to be one of our best.
Thank you. Alright, Commissioner Millsap?
Yeah, I have two items.
We're doing that too, um, for, at the New Hope, I mean, at the New Hope Church. That's, that was really awesome. I wasn't able to attend, but I did see that you guys had a really great turnout. That's awesome that you guys all provide the prayer, cause it's needed, especially with all the, uh, chaos and disruptions that's been going on in the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got two items I'd like to share with the commissioners. First one is like the Fourth of July, our community was bombarded with visitors in our community. Uh, we just finished the boat race and if anybody was around during that time, our community was packed with visitors.
Yes.
So that was an economic boost for us. Hopefully the, that, the rewards of that could sprinkle down to the communities. And the Port County Tourism Bureau, we have a board member who sat on that board, who still is on that board. So kudos to Jack Arnett and his gang for making it happen. And the other one is, uh, Michigan Boulevard, uh, Cableance has just moved in. And it is so refreshing to know that you don't have to drive all the way south for a light bulb that, uh, they are in the East Gate Plaza, I think it is.
Yes, East Gate.
And I just noticed that the other day. So thank God that finally happened. But it is nice to have a hardware store, because there's certain items in a hardware store you can't get at the grocery store or whatever.
Yep.
So, uh, kudos for Cableance for coming to the neighborhood.
It's been a long time since Harvey's was in that store.
Right.
Right. So it's long overdue.
Yeah.
They have a Dollar Tree or something down there too.
Yeah, yeah, Dollar Tree, Family Dollar. I mean, it's finally coming to the east side of town.
Yeah, right.
It's my point that, because we used to always have to get in our car and drive all the way to Walmart or south side of town for a little item that we should be able to drive two blocks for. So. Good that they're, good that they have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benny, nothing? Commissioner Armstrong?
Uh, nothing.
Alright, um, Commissioner Cooper, do you have anything under commissioner comment?
I do not.
Alright. That being said, um, motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Yes, please.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you.